Hello world, it's John Pinto, your roving Realtor, boom vee vont, video blogger, and I am at Inglewood Winery yet again drinking some 2010 Cabernet Sauvignon. And I am here with Bernie Narvays.
Right.
Napa City Council District Candidate. Go vote, registered, District Four?
That's right.
District Four.
That's right, John.
Thank you, thank you very much. Voting Day is November 3rd, I guess, can you register now or did everybody miss the vote for registration?
So you can still register up to the election. They'll get your ballot, you can, you can vote on the same day. But to get by mail, it is too late.
Okay.
You can still register, you can vote up until election night.
Do you go to the place next to the falafel place on 1127?
The county building elections office.
Yeah.
You know what, I'm gonna double check about the polling places, because it's not open yet, I don't believe so. Should be open next week.
I did vote, I voted in advance, I dropped it off, they had the real Dropbox there?
Yeah, the real ones.
The real ones?
Yep.
Indeed, indeed. So educate us a little bit, District Four, is this something new where it's not open districts?
It's correct. So many of you know that I ran in 2018, and that was citywide. So we have to cover everything within city limits to reach out to voters. This time, we're now running in districts. There are two districts up for election, the District Two, south of Redwood and west of 29.
We did have something on Beth Painter.
Beth Painter is one of the candidates.
And I did vote for Beth, I thought she was a fantastic candidate with her planning background.
Wonderful. So yeah, so that's District Two candidate. And for District Four, which is where I'm running, that is between 29 and the Upper River, and south of Trancas, and between Jefferson and 29, and then south of Lincoln and Sasko.
Okay.
So it's, it's a, it's a very diverse community district, because you have downtown, you have south Napa, then you have that Napa High area. So very different neighborhoods with different needs, different demographics. So, so it's exciting to, to run in that district, because you go from one neighborhood to another, and it's different needs, you know, different, different architecture. You have old town, where you have beautiful historic homes. Then you go to south of Napa, where you have the new, the newer homes, the three-story homes, and you have Meadows, and you know, then you go to Napa High, and you have, you know, a very diverse community, there are Latinx community neighborhoods. So it's, it's, it keeps it interesting. Conversation is not the same from one neighborhood to the other.
Definitely. I lived in downtown San Jose, District Three, for 26 years, and it was very diverse, very diverse. We had everything over there.
Diversity is good.
Indeed.
We learn a lot from each other.
Indeed.
We grow as a community, we, we, you know, when we learn from each other, we tend to be more creative in our thoughts and process, and usually, and hopefully, what we want is better outcomes, better decisions, because we understand each other better.
Indeed. So I see you were in the armed forces.
Marine Corps.
You were in the Marine Corps?
That's right.
Where'd you do your basic training?
MCRD San Diego. Marine Corps Recruitment Depot in San Diego.
Oh, well, thank you for serving.
It was an honor. Actually, I did bring my mask here, just, we're now safe, but this is the one I'm wearing today, which is, says veteran, Marine Corps, and you got, you know, discharged as a sergeant, so.
What was your specialty in the Marine Corps?
Infantry, 0311.
Oh, you were like hardcore, holy Toledo.
Yeah, you know, it was interesting, because we, me specifically changed to, actually as a driver, we drove, when I drove, when we served in Ramadi Rock back in 09, we went to mounted patrols, which, everything was in vehicles, so. I got to drive a lot and see a lot of that, that area, which is different, it seems like a different world in here. It really is a different world in here. So, you know, comparing things is just not the same. But it's, it's good to be able to see the world a little bit, get some perspective on differences, and how fortunate we are to, to now live in this country, which I'm very grateful as an immigrant to be in this country, but specifically in Napa Valley, I really love this town, City of Napa.
So, not every municipality has an opportunity to have a Marine Corps person running for a city council. What is it, what are the takeaways from your experience in basic training and in the Marine Corps that you will bring to the city council that other people just can't bring because they don't have that experience?
Well, you know, I'm not gonna compare it to somebody else, but for me specifically, one of my takeaways is I was a team. You don't do things on your own. You may be a leader, but you either follow a good leader, or you lead a good team. You work collaboratively with others to be able to overcome challenges, and we are facing some tremendous challenges. So my takeaway is, you know, be able to work as a team, take initiative, look at the, you know, mission accomplishment, so achieving your goal and how you get there. A lot of times, I like to work backwards, like this is where we need to get, how do we get there, work backwards, make sure you have the, the team that will help you get there. And still be able to be flexible, to adapt to the changing environment, because as you know, you can plan as much as you want, but things can change, right? COVID-19 changed so many things for us. Some, some businesses unfortunately did not survive, but as leaders, as government, we have to, you know, adapt to the, to, to the changing environment. You know, what science is telling us, what leaders are telling us, what the economy is looking like, how are we gonna recover? So our goal is to, to open our businesses safely, get our labor back to work, and try and get some kind of normalcy in our, in our community.
Well, I, I like your management by objective. Articulate, visualize your end result, and then backfill it with the process to get there. I love that. Tell us a little bit more about that approach. Did you learn that in the Marine Corps, or did you learn that in other life experience?
Well, the Marine Corps taught me a lot of, about myself and leadership. There's mistakes made, and there's, and that allows you to learn and grow as a leader, so, you know, there's different leadership styles, and sometimes it takes a while to, to find your own leadership style. So, you know, now leaving the Marine Corps, I really understand my leadership. It's not just Marine Corps, but, you know, I've, I've served in other boards, and I was in Leadership Napa Valley, which even expanded I even more. It, it taught me about personalities, right? Each person has a different personality, you interact differently, their responses are differently, they, they take on different roles, better than, than other tasks. So understanding personalities when you're team building, when you're trying to accomplish a goal is very important, and, and how you approach your, your leadership style, to make sure that you're efficient, that, that you have the right team, and you have, and same in business, right? When you're doing biz, business with other people, you have employees, you wanna make sure you, you're matching the task with that personality, it's not with the personality. You can't always do that, but the more you do that, the more successful that you're likely to be.
So let's talk about some of your priorities on the city council, as a prospective member of the city council. In no particular order, what are your objectives?
Well, we talked, I did talk about recovering, getting our businesses open, bringing our labor back, you know, now we're back to work. Now we're in orange, that means that more businesses can open, there's more capacity for restaurants and other indoor services. So we're, we're on the right track. And before I continue, I just, I wanna make sure I give a shout to first responders. I saw that the glass fire has now been contained. There's a lot of devastation in our valley, and it's just heartbreaking to see that, and the sacrifice from first responders, just, you know, I just wanna make sure that we send them some love, because they're, they're out there sacrificing themselves and putting themselves in harm's way.
It's amazing, it's amazing what they've had to do, because there were a few weeks ago there, where you'd look at the fire map in California, and the fire map went pretty much from San Diego, the entire length of California, Oregon, and Washington.
Yeah, California is hurting, we're all hurting. So, so going back to my priorities, you know, I talked a lot about housing. Housing is the core of so many issues. When you look at declining enrollment in schools, our traffic, the quality of life, multiple families in one household, you know, there's an article about the presentation made to client commission about the vacancy rate. You know, if you heard me talk a couple months ago, we were talking about 3%, 4% vacancy rate in our rental market, now it is under 2%. I believe it was 1.4% to be exact, but it was a very low number.
It's a basically equivalent to zero, the only time it's vacant, and when one person's moving out and the other person's moving in.
There's a waiting list. I mean, you know, you build market rate housing, and it gets filled, you know, completely, because there's no other, people don't have an option, you know, but we need to build more housing that's affordable. Find creative ways to do that.
When I was talking to Beth Painter, who has a background in planning, I, I've had a concept of micro apartments, from the standpoint of, I do leasing with rentals, and especially in Napa Valley, I noticed I get a preponderance of [BLEEP] waiters, bartenders, winery workers, they're single, they put in a lot of hours, they don't need a big place, they just need a place to lay their head at night, someplace to brew their coffee in the morning, you make themselves a little snack, it doesn't need to be a Taj Mahal. And if you went with micro apartments, you, the micro apartments even priced per square foot, if they were renting out at a premium, they would still be relatively inexpensive. Could you see a path forward for micro apartments in Napa?
Absolutely. Some of the work I've been involved with in the cities through the general plan update, we looked at the city, looked at the map, the land use, current land use designation, which means where you can build housing, where you can build commercial industrial, now what density. There are areas where, you know, within the city of Napa, specifically on Jefferson, Trancas, Sasko, closer downtown, where you can go dense, you can go a few stories up, and by design, we can create those kind of units that you're describing. I think it's a fantastic idea. Even so, having shared spaces, whether it's a kitchen, or, or living room areas, somewhere where...
Some variation of a single-room occupancy kind of a deal.
Exactly. So you're not, you know, having one kitchen per unit, maybe you have it for four units. That's the understanding of the tenants. So affordability by design. Also, there's a lot of government-owned land within the city of Napa, that I think will be a great opportunity to work with Napa County interstate officials to be able designate that for housing, and restrict it for housing that's affordable for our workforce. So there, there are different ways to do it, and we have to start being creative in that approach.
Good. Let's talk a little bit about connectivity. You know, we're living in a virtual world, and unfortunately, in a virtual world, if you're techie and well-to-do, you know, you can have high-speed internet and good equipment and things of that nature, but it doesn't necessarily include all economic strata. So how do you see Napa in terms of providing connectivity to all of its citizens, and enabling them with technology so they can exist and prosper in a virtual world?
Well, before I get into that part, I just want to acknowledge our essential workers, because, you know, as we become more reliant on technology, you know, there's been a lot of talk about people working from home. But now our essential workers, truck drivers, or the people that are cleaning our homes and hotels, people that are feeding us.
Boots on the ground.
Exactly. So, yes, there are some more skilled labor that, that is, technical jobs are working from home, our teachers, some of them, but there's a lot of essential workers that are gonna still go out there, that are putting themselves in harm's way again. So there is more need for connectivity, but, you know, we have to be mindful of our essential workers, unless they're out there, right?
And what can we do for them on municipal level?
We wanna make sure that we have PPE, protective personal equipment, available to them. We continue to work with the state and federal government for grants, to be able to fund these approaches, so we don't dip into a general fund, because we are already trying to recover from that. So we wanna support our local small businesses and employees. We can do that by working with the chambers, with working with civic organizations that really wanna give back to the community. There's so much opportunity and people willing to give back, that we can work, we don't have to recreate anything. We just have to, we just have to lead and, or move that away so others can get these things done.
Well, you sound like an ex-Marine addressing the, the workers in the field that are not sitting behind their desks, and thank God that they're a priority for you, and for the rest of the city, of course, and the rest of the citizens. So on bringing high tech to more citizens of Napa, how do you feel about that? What do you see in the future there?
Well, I mean, we are, we're becoming more reliant on technology, so we have to be efficient there. I know that, you know, I don't have the same connectivity as before, you know, my wife and I don't, so we have to be, we have to have a balance between safety and technology. And also, how can we bring, not just [BLEEP] technology in a safe way, but, you know, fiber optics technology? I know that there are some people living on the county after the fire last time, the AT&amp;T brought fiber optics over, and they're, they have faster speeds than people in the city. So it's, so it's there, you can do it.
Oh, so AT&amp;T brought some fiber optics to more remote areas?
Yep, yeah, I know that, because I, you know, I visit some areas out there, and I, I checked their internet speed, and they're like 200 downloads, it's insane.
Oh.
Right? I would love to have that in the city, so there, so look at ways to be able to do that as well. So we just have to continue to, I, I think as we fix our roads, fix our sidewalks, if we look at areas where we're going to break ground, is this an opportunity to work with some of the utility companies to, to improve our infrastructure as far as technology?
Let's talk a little bit about traffic. You know, when I leave here at 5 o'clock, under COVID-19, I might not hit that much traffic going southbound on 29, or going across 128th and going southbound on Silverado Trail, but when we return to some kind of normal, we may again see some bottlenecks. What's your vision for mitigating traffic in Napa Valley?
So first, we have to understand why we have traffic problems. So about 37% of our workforce lives in Napa. Everybody else is coming in, right? So that's a problem.
So 63% of the workforce is coming in from Solano County, Sonoma County, Lake County...
American Canyon, other parts of Napa County. So that's specific number to the city of Napa.
Right.
I believe this was in the 2017 numbers report I got.
I get the picture.
You know, it's usually a few years back.
People coming and going, they're commuting into Napa.
So bringing our workforce back to our community, because a lot of times, these were workers that grew up in Napa, right, that have family here, aren't able, were not able to afford to live here, so moved out to other places. I know, you know, as an insurance professional, that I insure both businesses and families, and I insure a lot of renters, and when they buy a home, the zip code changes, and it's not 94558 or 9, it's an outside zip code.
Yeah, they're probably going to Fairfield, right? Or Vacaville.
Fairfield, Dixon is growing a lot, I know families are living, going over there. You know, years before, it was American Canyon, and now that's becoming pretty expensive, so they're looking to, to go to Fairfield and Vacaville and Dixon. You know, so we're losing the, a sense of community in a way for, for our future. Part of the survey that we got in the General Plan Advisory Committee, and now, let me explain what that is, is every 20 years, we have to update our general plan, which is like the business plan for, for Napa, what we wanna do.
I've attended some of those meetings, yeah.
And for, for the, for the public, so they're aware of what that is, is our vision for the next 20 years. And we gather a lot of data, and some of that is, you know, maintain the integrity of our neighborhoods and small-town feel. You can't have that without families. If families are leaving, how are we gonna keep that, the small-town feel? You know, so we, we don't want it to be just all of our workers not being able to live here. There has to be an opportunity, we have to do better, create ways for people to be able to rent here, and also buy a home, say, so they feel more committed to this town. If you buy a home, you're part of the community.
Yeah, absolutely, and, yeah, as you know, I'm a real estate broker. You know, the tricky part right now with the affordability question is, under COVID-19, the more density, the worse it is. You know, people have been flocking to lower density, detached houses, they've been still buying condominiums and townhouses, but at a less frenetic rate. The trend has definitely been towards less density. Do you see any way forward where you can combine the concepts of less density and affordability, which would seem like an impossible task?
Well, I'll tell you that in the 60s and 70s, we mainly built single-family homes.
Indeed, indeed.
We feathered our, our, the development in single-family homes. So the more single-family homes we build, the less affordable we create the environment for renters and homebuyers. So we, we don't have a lot of land in Napa to develop, right? So we have to be very careful how we develop, and I know some people have said, you know, certain areas shouldn't be developed, but we should have that discussion of if it does, what will, what will be appropriate? What will it look like? It's not just blanketing the area with housing. We have to be, we have to look at the, the effect on the environment, right? Climate change is very real, these know that with the fires, we have to protect our water, or, or make sure the infrastructure is there, so there's a process to this. But it starts with the conversations, understanding that the housing crisis is very real, we need to have that conversation, we need to acknowledge that, and say we need to move forward. And as we move forward, we start having that conversation, how is it gonna look like? What's the design like? What's the density like? And, you know, you mentioned, because of COVID-19, we wanna be apart from each other, but we're gonna overcome this at some point. But the housing crisis will still be there. It was there before COVID-19, it's gonna be after COVID-19 if we don't take this head on.
Right, right. So we talked a little bit about internet speed, we talked a little bit about traffic, we talked a little bit about affordable housing. What other items are high on your list as a prospective city council person?
Great question, and we live in a very diverse community, about 40% Latinx community population, you know, and there's other, it's not just the only thing, the only community that adds to the diversity, but it's, it's a large number, many Spanish speakers, and our city needs to have that representation. You know, and District Four is, I believe, is the most [BLEEP] demographics with Latinx numbers. So I would be very proud to, to represent that community, because for, for many of the members in that community, I understand as far as culture and language, and, and right now, there's a big mistrust in government within the Latinx community.
Well, certainly, my, you know, my family is from Italy, and my family is from Naples in Italy, and historically, the Southern Italians have had a lot of distrust for government, and I'm sure people from Mexico, you know, see the questionable effectiveness of their government, and figure, I will steer clear. You have the same kind of reaction to government from a lot of Asian countries, so certainly, it would be a new educational experience for them to get involved and trust government in the United States.
Right, and it starts with electing people that represent that diverse community. You gotta make sure that it's, that reflects that, that district that you're running in, and I'm here to serve everybody, to talk to everybody, but I can't go without saying that there is a mis, underrepresented demographic in our community. So I'm very excited to hopefully be representing everybody and addressing those issues.
So, you know, we all have had our awareness elevated with Black Lives Matter this year.
That's right.
You know, seeing travails of George Floyd and Breonna Taylor, you know, being an Italian-American, growing up in Brooklyn in an Italian-American neighborhood, we were in a little bubble, and as progressive and liberal as our views may have been, it took some major transgressions for the travails of the black community to become much more visible to us. At the same time, non-Latino citizens of Napa may not be sensitive and familiar with the needs of our large Latino populace. What are their particular needs that you'll be addressing?
Well, first, it starts with getting more comfortable with uncomfortable conversations about race, about diversity. Why is there, why do we have these issues? Some people that may have never experienced racism, discrimination, may not be aware of these issues, of the trauma that's been caused, you know, generation by generation, because people look different, they come from a different place, it's very real.
Speak a different language.
Different language. And it's uncomfortable for some people to have that conversation. My goal is to be able to have those conversations with members that haven't experienced that, and explain why isn't, why it is important to have the conversation. City of Napa declared racism, systemic racism, a public health crisis. Believe that, that was the whole term. A variation, a variation of that. So, you know, what that means is a promise to, to be able to address these issues, and acknowledge that there is racism, and we may never be able to get rid of racism, but we can get rid of the tools, which is systemic racism. If you look at land use, land use is one of the greatest tools used to, to further that agenda. You know, we look at demographics, is who has not been allowed to live in certain areas? Redlining, when somebody wants to buy a home, you look at documentation saying, only certain people can live there.
We just had, we just had a very big conversation at the California Association of Realtors on some of the covenants, conditions, and restrictions that are illegal, preventing people from certain races, creeds, and colors from buying property in certain subdivisions. And, and then how you address that is interesting, because you don't want to eliminate it, you can't quote-unquote whitewash it, you know, it has to be exposed to history, where people know that these kinds of injustices did take place. So, and then, how do you categorize racism? We had an interesting discussion with our 900 board members on, you know, racism against blacks, racism against Jews, racism against Asians, racism against Latinos. And how do you point out and escalate perhaps excessive racism, or obvious racism, against the different components of the beleaguered? It was quite interesting.
That, that's a great point you make, because just me personally, how I approach it, I look at the person that I'm engaging with, and what is their intent? You know, maybe they, they don't know on the subject very well, are using phrases that they believe is appropriate, but their intent is not to be hurtful. And if they're, then I will take the opportunity to share with them the, the right phrases, and, I mean, I had just had this conversation with a client, this older gentleman, different cultures, and was kind of, you know, a little frustrated with, with political correctness. And what I said was, look, it's about intent. If somebody really is trying to hurt somebody else and bring him down, you know, then, because of what they look like, and they don't wanna have any, they don't have any intentions to learn, that's different than somebody that was brought up differently, and hasn't been exposed to, to, you know, a different lens. And then I, I would share with them my experience and what I see through my lens, and, and sometimes that, that says, you know what, I, I see what you mean. So there's two approaches there.
Yeah, and I, and I have to extend an apology to another beleaguered class, which is women. You know, women have been beleaguered for many, many generations, you know...
100 years ago.
Yeah, whether it was the vote, I think we're just about at 100 years on supper, aren't we?
Yeah, I believe it's 100 years ago.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Well, you know, basically, not getting overly political or controversial about it, but, you know, as I see things, you have the exploited and the exploiters. And, you know, the more equality we can bring socially, politically, the better off we are as a country, because what makes us great is our diversity, not our similarity.
Exactly, that's what I said at the beginning. You know, we learn from each other, and, and then we can take the, you know, nobody's perfect, but you have something positive to bring to the table, and so do I, and we put those things together and work towards unity, then we're off, better off.
I, I was at a Celia Cruz concert a couple of years ago, and she was talking about all the Latinos and the Latino countries, Ecuador, Mexico, Paraguay, and I go, what about Italy? We're the first Latinos. Latina is basically outside of Rome. So I, I consider myself somewhat of a Latino, being Italian.
And there's a lot of similarities in our cultures.
We're definitely not Norwegians, no offense against Norwegians.
Yeah, I think there's more similarities in our cultures than some other ones, so... You know, and the other thing, you know, there are pockets in the city of Napa that belong to, to the county, right? These, these members of those communities can't vote, they, they, they're not, they should be part of the city of Napa, and there's been a lot of discussion about that, and I, and I think that we need to move forward with, with having these pockets. I think there's, I was looking at LAFCO map today, and I think there is 25 pockets that within the RUL, the rural urban limit of City of Napa, in the city, in the city limits of Napa, that are county islands. There's some real large ones, west, west of 29, the Pueblo area, and specifically, it's a large one. And, you know, people can't, they don't have the services from the city like others, and they don't have the availability to vote in the city of Napa, and I think that we need to look at that, and, and see how we can move forward. But there are some challenges there. You know, some people don't wanna be annexed, don't wanna be part of the city, others do, and others don't have any idea that they're not part of the city. Like, where's, where's, you're not my ballot. You know, that happened in 2018, I have friends in that area, like, what do me, I can't vote for you. Right? So, you know, there's problems with that, there's, there's that Napa County, City of Napa relationship.
Hey, I love, I love having city services. I, I think it's an education process. Hey, I love, I love having city services, I I think it's an education process, I think people that live in the county. Don't understand what they're missing out on not having city services, what do you think about that?
Well, you know, I've talked to somebody that's on the on the east side of Napa and they're in a pocket and they have to contact the sheriff. And then on the other side, then for any issues or the county services, but on the other side of the of the road is city. So eh something has to hop back and forth between city and county to be able to address issues that most of us don't have to deal with.
Yes.
You know, so um just something to acknowledge that that um there's something we need to move forward with and and continue to figure out how we can solve that.
So let's talk about your youthful idealism, you're running for city council, public service. They really mean that when they call it public service, uh you know, because you don't get rich becoming a city council person. Uh and although.
Job and you get paid part time.
Yeah, exactly.
Do this for the money.
No, 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 but you know, it's Maslow's hierarchy of needs, thank God that you're in a position. Uh where uh as far as Maslow's hierarchy of needs, rather than subsisting on survival. You are at self-expression, because basically, running for the city council is being at the top of Maslow's hierarchy of needs. You're looking to express yourself, you're looking for personal growth, uh but you know you're gonna have to sacrifice to do it. How did you make that leap? Uh you know, you 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 mentioned you have an insurance business, you have a wife, you have a child and now you're going into public, two children. And now.
Beautiful girls.
And now you're gonna leap into public service, uh that must have taken. Yeah, I I I anticipate, I anticipate that you will, but that that must have taken some introspection. What caused you to take that leap?
So about five years ago, or a little over five years ago, um you know, running my business, I was involved in. Veteran nonprofits, helping my veterans, you know, because my fellow veterans, because there's a large suicide rate among the veteran community. That's my focus and and being involved with youth and there is a vacancy at Napa City Council. And I saw as an opportunity, a call to action for me, one, because we wanted to, I wanted to make sure that was. Represent said, representation for a diverse community. Um and I felt confident that many people would step up from the Latinx community, but they didn't, I was a little frustrated. Uh there's only two members that did, that that applied for the vacancy.
From the Latino community?
And um very, two very well respected people that I admire very much and I was like, well, what's going on? Instead complaining, I applied, this is my first time I see council, my first time with the microphone and I jumped right into it. Not think, you know, I didn't think I was gonna have a chance to get one, right? If I did, you know, great, I was gonna, you know, work hard for and do the do the work, but what it did, it it. It told me, you know what, this is something I wanna do, it just sparked something inside and and told me, this is a, there's a place for me here, that's why I felt. But I need to learn, I need to to understand more, to be able to do the job and and in the way that I wanna do it. So I went to work, I I I attended, you know, Citizens Academy, which is the basics of government, budget, different departments. Get the foundation going, then I served on a few other boards, uh so I can understand our community, the needs, right? Outside of government work, find out what the makeup of our community. Um and then I applied for Parks and Rec to understand the public process, understand how meetings are ran, how how it works within. Relationship between staff, city council, so I understand that portion and now uh the vice chair of the Napa General Plan. And and that allowed me to just add tools along the way and put me in a position where now I can. Really step into this role and hit the ground running.
Bravo, bravo, that is very impressive, so uh consolidating and summarizing your resume. Dad, husband, entrepreneur, marine. Uh municipal volunteer on multiple levels, sounds like the whole package to me, Bernie.
Well, you know, it's it's, you're naming things that are on my list, but really it's is, I can't do this without the support of my wife Gabby. I mean, she is an amazing person, I wouldn't, I couldn't do any of this if, one, she wasn't on board. Uh cause we do this as a family, family is very important to me, it's very important for for what makes up a community. Um and there's things that has, that we need to do more for families, for our youth. You know, I wanna create a a a youth commission so we can hear from our teens, from our high school students. Right, because I, it's been a while since I've been a teenager, right? I can assume what they need, but it's better if I hear from them, get them not only involved civically, but hopefully encourage them to get involved. You know, once they become a voting age and can run for office, they're better prepared and um we can hear directly from them from needs.
I love that idea, we're gonna do a municipal bar mitzvah for all the teenagers. I've always.
I've never gone to bar mitzvah.
Oh.
See that TV?
Oh, you don't know what you're missing, uh don't get me wrong, I'm an Italian Catholic, but I've been to more synagogues than churches.
Any friends out there that are going to bar mitzvah after all this thing is, COVID nineteen is settled?
Let me.
Please send me an invitation, I wanna be part of it.
Uh let, well, let me put it this way, you're the youth initiative, there should be a bar mitzvah component in it. Uh so that would be great, so uh, well, it's been great uh getting to know you, Bernie. And I'm delighted that we had a chance to uh share some uh Engelnook Rubicon flagship two thousand and ten.
Thank you for sharing.
Oh, it's my pleasure and uh for people that want to get involved in your campaign. And even more importantly, uh for people who wanna make sure they're registered and they do vote, uh what uh parting words do you have for them?
Register, vote and vote, just do it, get involved, that's that's your power, that's.
Today, today.
That's what makes our country, you know, such a wonderful place to live, we have our challenges, I love this this country. And to overcome those challenges, you gotta vote, you gotta elect the right leaders and and be able to solve these issues. You know, and and as time goes goes on, uh we we start addressing these issues and become a better community, better. Better uh government, better country and it's not just about the president, it's local elections. Those are the, the leaders are gonna affect you probably a lot more, a lot sooner. And in the in the in the lo- in the larger uh way than than uh higher, higher level um electeds, right?
The boots on the ground, the mayor and the city council.
And I'm, I try and make myself avail- as available as as possible for people, you know, be seen around town. Not so much now because we're we're sheltering, uh but usually I try to make myself available, uh whether you just see me. At the store or wherever at at function, um but you know, I'm very fortunate for this opportunity. Not something I take lightly and hopefully that um the work that my team, my family, my team and I put in really shows up on November third.
And where will they find your uh campaign website?
NapaBernie.com.
Oh, that is easy.
Try and make it easy, yeah.
Napa Bernie, B E R N I E.
B E R N I, Bernardo Alfredo Narváez, but Bernie is pretty simple.
Bernando Alfredo.
Alfredo Narváez.
I I might.
Vasquez, because we have two last names, right? You keep your father's last name and your mother's last name. Uh so, but it's, um my driver's license, my ID is Bernardo Alfredo Narváez.
Fantastic, well, thank you for visiting with us, I hope this is not the last conversation we have on video. Thank you all for listening to my disembodied voice today and Bernie. Uh it sounds like uh the city of Napa will be lucky to have him. Uh so what we will catch up with you on the next page, you have any parting words before we uh finish this video?
Hey, we're in this together, let's vote, let's take care of each other and make sure that we uh survive this.
Excellent, thank you Bernie, that was fabulous.
Thank you.